I'd like to call to order the March 1, 2016 meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And if you'll, we'll start off by the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer. Once again, we celebrate the changing season where spring flowers, buds, leaves, and smells break through the cold and barren winter season. Just as our mountains are revived and sprout new growth, remind us that each one of us can grow to be better people, act better, and be the best we can possibly become. Each one of us is unique and has special gifts, qualities, and opportunities to make this world a better place to live. Anyone can turn on their offerings and serve others when and where they choose. Use this season of waking up of nature to prod us to become more involved in Buncombe County, searching out ways that we can grow compassionate, caring, and loving for all the other people who live with us in this beautiful part of the world. Help us all to bloom to be people who can make a difference and fully use the gifts that each one of us has been given. Amen. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Commissioner, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable law regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda that outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract that might come before this body? Here and now, I find that there are no conflicts tonight, and all the board members have a duty and obligation to vote. Next, we'll go into public comment. The time limit for comment to the boards, three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, phone, and email with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the Commission or pertaining to matters upon which we might act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the Commission are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone else in the board, in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts a session will be asked to leave the meeting. And the Commission deserves the right to deny public address on any subject that has previously been presented to the board. Is there any public comment tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Swiscott.
Before I get started, I'd like to say this is absolutely beautiful. This is the first time I've been in here, and it is just kind of believable. And I hope that, I was talking to Kathy earlier, I hope she'll promote it with one of your Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Max Swiscott. I live at 10 Round Oak Road in Buncombe County. Thank you for allowing the time at your meeting to inform you of a concern that the Council of Independent Business Owners have. The Interstate 26 problem over the years has been caught up in all kinds of political and selfish ambitions. CBO has long given up on eight lanes, six lanes, and even picking the routes. Those are decisions best made by the transportation professionals in North Carolina Department of Transportation. Basically, we are totally in favor of getting an upgraded roadway through Buncombe and Henderson Counties. We want you to be aware that the problems associated with an ever-overburdened and dangerous Interstate 26 are now even greater and more magnified when one looks at the human carnage that is now occurring. According to the State Highway Patrol and EMS records, since 2011 through January of this year, there had been 2,523 accidents and 3,165 calls for emergency medical assistance with 949 injuries and unfortunately 17 deaths. These numbers are not pine-the-sky figures. These numbers represent families who get the call at any time, day or night, to come to the emergency room to consult with loved ones. And yes, some get the calls from authorities wanting to know where the family wishes the remains to be sent. You are all in positions of influence. That can help speed the I-26 project along and make it a priority for our community. We continue to see how the issue of I-26 can be skewed and politicized by some municipalities and by oversight organizations. To say, to that we say, 2,523 accidents, 3,165 ambulance calls, 949 injuries, and 17 deaths. It's time to build the road. The Council of Independent Business Owners asks that you, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, once again go on record to fully support the decisions of the North Carolina Department of Transportation in the state of North Carolina to build the road in all expediency based on the number of accidents and fatalities associated with current roadway. Thank you.
Thank you, man. We'll put that resolution in our minutes. Thanks. Any other public comment tonight? Mr. Rice? And you'll be next, okay, in a second or third.
You're not taking public comment on the bills, on the tax?
Oh, anything, yeah, anything. Not in our official.
That's what I wanted to know. I didn't hear it. Anyway, I wanted to speak on that.
Yes, sir. Start, give time over again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Member of the Board, we appreciate the opportunity. My concern is, we've had a tax reevaluation at an earlier inflation, 2013. And my concern is that people in the community have really been hurt when 2006 and '07 come along in that area of time, and their property tax was held except for a little bit of relief, a .5, if you think that's relief. And this has been a substantial piece to 2013, that the taxpayers had to pay some serious money out when their property was not at the day it should have been. Then 2013 come along, and here it's digging to us again. And my concern is that you're fixing to do it again. If you vote for this to go forward, you're going to screw the people of Buncombe County in tax hike. Now, 85, or 50 to 85 percent fluctuation in these neighborhoods? If the tax office is doing their job, every year, the tax people can evaluate the properties and do what they need to do with the people at that time. They don't have to wait eight years to do it. They don't have to wait for, wait for you all to make an action. They can take action when they see it. And my concern is that your budget is already set. You guys are already looking at the money for the next year on what this is going to do, and let me tell you, it's going to be substantial what our budget is going to bring in. And there's a reason for this. You guys got a lot of information out there on debt that's going to have to be paid, and if you don't do this right now, you're going to be in trouble later, and you know that. And I'll tell you from a tax assessor right here in Buncombe County that I've talked with personally, he's been gone for some years. He told me, he said, "The only thing I have to do is I have to wait for the county manager to give me the okay, and then apply whatever she wants to the record." And that's the way we come up with what we need for Buncombe County. Now, this is a very up straight, honest person. And he went on to another job, and he had had a good job when he retired. But let me tell you, this ain't all, this is smoke and mirrors. My property, I can say, my property went down 60% in taxes, and I'd have been paying around $600 more than I should for years. When the tax assessor looked at it, he said, "I don't know what in goodness anybody would be doing like this." Now, and I sit here and listen and watch, and I pay my taxes. But it's time that the people stood up, and you stand up for the people. The people of Buncombe County is not getting a tax break, and they need one. This smoke and mirror don't work.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir, on the third row.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Timothy Sattler, and I've come out tonight to ask for some consideration regarding people that we have in prison that have been convicted here in Buncombe County, nonviolent offenders that are currently incarcerated. And, you know, I'd like to see some effort working with the District Attorney Williams and our State Attorney General to request clemency for the people that we have in prison that are nonviolent. People were clearly coming around to the idea that drug use is a public health issue and not criminal activity. And we have, I'm not sure how many people, but I sure would like to know, that have been convicted through our criminal justices here in Buncombe County that are currently incarcerated. And with the last six months of the Obama administration, we have a real opportunity to see justice for these folks. So that's why I came out tonight. I sure would appreciate one or several of the Commissioners to get with District Attorney Williams and see what can be done here in these next six to eight months, I guess, we have left in the administration. Thank you.
Mr. Sattler, thank you. We got our policy, and I know we have a lot of programs where we look at offenders, whether they need to be in prison to begin with. Could we get, Mr. Sattler, if you'll leave your address, I think we can get you some information on what we do up front, if there's a lot of programs that we're involved in.
We'll be happy to get in that and get into the right contacts in the court system.
Yeah, it'd be something for Mr. Williams, and I think he'd be interested in talking about that. Any other public comments tonight? All right, here and now, we'll look at the agenda. There has been a request to pull a little explanation about the lottery money and the consent agenda. Other than a little more discussion of that, is there a motion to follow the agenda as we've printed minus that and follow as we've discussed in the pre-session? A motion by Commissioner Veltzer. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jones. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. By six to zero vote, we have, we will pass the agenda as planned. Commissioner Frost is out of town tonight. She will not be here at our meeting. Could someone speak on the lottery? Who might prepare to do that? I don't know if we...
Yeah, just the budget for Isaac Dixon. What exactly are you wanting to know?
That's for the STEM, that's for the STEM school. Is that right?
This one is for Isaac Dixon.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, just explain how that comes from the state, and it's not funded here, it comes from the state. Explain how that works.
So those are restricted funds that, it's lottery money that comes out through the School Capital Commission, which is by term statute, that's the money we require to use for school capital projects. So this particular budget, it's just a matter of signing that money to the Isaac Dixon building project.
So this one is for Isaac Dixon?
Yes.
All right. Since we did pull that, let's go ahead and have a separate vote on that. Any further discussion of the Capital Commission Fund project ordinance? Let's go and take a motion to adopt or reject that. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance?
No.
By the vice chair, second by Commissioner Jones. Need any further discussion? All those in favor of passing that ordinance as it was presented in the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that ordinance is passed by six to zero vote. Good news, who wants to give the SERV program? Do you have a pick? Mr. Frye?
Mr. Ketterjohn? Mommy House?
Buncombe County Commissioners, I appreciate the SERV program, which is the Sheriff's Executive Resource Volunteers. The Board does hereby express its sincere appreciation for the dedication and effort of the citizens and volunteers of the Sheriff's Office. Since this has began, the SERV program in November 2013, qualified individuals have volunteered an average of 32 hours a month to assist our law enforcement personnel. The work has allowed sworn deputies to perform essential duties, save tax dollars, and inhibit the Sheriff's Office ability to maintain and preserve presence in our community. Commissioners, I appreciate your interest.
My name is Carl Kapperjohn. I'm the coordinator of the SERV program. This is my boss here tonight, so it keeps it short. I do have 20 minutes of prepared statement here. As of today, since that beginning of the session, we, SERV, has donated or given to the county 8,000 hours of service at a value of almost $168,000. So we're kind of proud of that, and that's with approximately nine volunteers doing that over that period of time on average. So what we do is, those activities that sworn deputies, it takes them away from those jobs so they can go do what the train to do. And we are really a civilian, uniformed, non-law enforcement volunteer group. And we do a variety of jobs that the law enforcement officers are doing. We can take that and not do it. I'll give you a couple of examples. There is a accident, say, over in Smoky Park, 40, and you've got to sit around and wait for a record. You've got to direct traffic. You've got to move people along. Deputies, they need to be on the road because there's a lot of square miles in Buncombe you have, and there's only so many people to cover that. So we will be the ones that'll wait for the record. We'll be the ones that'll help move traffic along. We'll do the funeral processions. We will do extra checks on homes. My personal activity is I do community watch teaching, and I do community relations for the Sheriff's Department with a sworn officer. So these are what types of things that we kind of do. And of all of us, there's only one person in the group who has previous law enforcement experience. I have none. I come out of the medical field, and so military medicine and what have you, that's probably why I do this, because I got, I like uniforms, that way I don't have to dress them. I just go in the closet, put it on, and it looks right when I come out, and I don't have to put on my light. So I just want to thank you for the award, and I appreciate it. And I think everybody that is in the programs is very thankful for what you did for us, and very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and actually, this is not only, this is one of the original agenda. Is there any objection to doing the proclamation of Prepare-Thon Day? I think we probably ought to give a minus, okay. By unanimous consent, we'll go ahead, and Mr. Veltzer, if you'll present this, and Mayor Beahan, I think is here to accept this proclamation.
So today, we celebrate the proclamation of Buncombe Prepare-Thon Day. Whereas Buncombe County Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, are partnering with local businesses, schools, and community organizations to exercise emergency weather drills as part of FEMA's Prepare-Thon initiative to increase emergency preparedness and resilience. Whereas taking steps towards personal preparedness and ensuring that our households, workplaces, schools, houses of worship, and community-based organizations are prepared for disaster can reduce fatalities and economic devastation following a major crisis. And whereas participating in Buncombe's Prepare-Thon will increase the number of citizens who understand that taking time to think through what they would do in a time of weather emergency or other disaster could save their life and the lives of their family and neighbors. And whereas, as part of the Preparedness Drill on March 9, all residents will receive a landline emergency call from County Emergency Management asking residents to sign up for alert notifications by texting BCALERT to 888-777 or by going on www.nixie.com to sign up with a landline or email. And whereas, emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen of Buncombe County, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority at work and at home. And whereas, participating with FEMA and the Prepare-Thon will help ensure that our community becomes a leader in preparedness and contributes to our nation's resilience. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows. This March 9, 2016, be declared Buncombe Prepare-Thon Day in Buncombe County, that all citizens be and hereby encouraged to participate by taking the necessary steps to be prepared for the next emergency, the next weather emergency or disaster to date. This proclamation be effective upon its adoption adopted this, the first day of March 2016. Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chairman David Giedt.
Mr. Chairman. Maybe this isn't some political thing right before the primary, presidential primaries or anything?
No connection, no connection.
Good, good, good. I'm sure we'll get some other calls that maybe aren't quite as friendly.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, appreciate the proclamation. As most of you know, each year in March, the state has a tornado drill day for all of the schools across the state. This year, we talked to FEMA, and they wanted us to participate and partner with them. And this is the first Prepare-Thon in North Carolina, by the way. We've been putting out a lot of information, thanks to Kathy Hughes over here. She's done a tremendous amount of work getting the word out on the website on how you can be prepared, what you can do, for example, a go-kit if you had to evacuate immediately, develop an emergency plan for your family, and do different things. And we've also been encouraging people, we have an emergency alert system, and as you heard, it will call every number in Buncombe County within 30 minutes. And we're going to test that system, it's a fairly new system, next Tuesday, but you can also get emergency text alerts and the proclamation and the other information going out, tell us, have us sign on to that. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity, and we're going to keep working on this. We're not going to stop just next Tuesday. We're going to keep getting the word out, how people can take care of themselves, take care of their families. And as you know, the first 72 hours is what's critical for us, if something happens, so we can make sure that we can get the help that the citizens need. So with this, I appreciate it, and thank Kathy again for all of her help and her continued help. It's been a real project for the last two, three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see here, we don't have county manager report tonight, I believe, and we've got some new business. We're going to hear from Gary Roberts about the resolution advancing the 10-year-old reappraisal schedule. Mr. Roberts, I hope your move has gone well.
Thank you. We did get moved a week ago, and we're in our new location at 94 Cox. It's a very nice office, working out great. As a reminder, we do have parking for our citizens. It's across the street from the building, but it's a great location. Things are going very well with us on our move, almost like it didn't happen. Employees are settling in, they're doing a great job. I want to talk to you tonight about setting the date for the reappraisal. And I know Mr. Rice made a few comments, and I'll try to address some of those as I go along, to try to pinpoint some things that he had brought out that if he feels that way, maybe some other citizens might, to bring some clarity to that. The important thing that I'm going to ask you guys tonight is to consider property values. I'm going to talk about the equity of property values throughout my presentation tonight. In looking at advancing the reappraisal, a couple of things I want to address, I want to go through with you, kind of in a thumbnail sketch at a very high level. You know, what is a reappraisal? What do the laws say about the reappraisal, the timing of it? Changes for the date of the reappraisal? Why I think that's important, bring that to you. And then the timing, should you choose to do that? What does it look like for our office and the citizens, and what are the expectations of that? Just to give you a little bit of information as we get into that, the county has since 1988 done reappraisals every four years. Now, when the Great Recession came, that was talked about, Jerry mentioned, we did delay our reappraisal three additional years. We did it in 2006, and instead of doing it in 2010, we did it in 2013. You have a little information behind that, because it's some of the things he mentioned. When we first did the reappraisal in 2006, values continued to increase from 2007 and into 2008. It was as we got into the fall of 2008 and into 2009 when we saw the dramatic drop of property values. One of the issues that I looked at and tried to make recommendations to you as a board at that time was, was there enough change? Was there inequity for our citizens and in all the neighborhoods that we value to warrant us doing that? And one of the things we saw at that time was, there wasn't a lot of financing for homes. There wasn't a lot of sales going on for us to even have to track as a market values for properties. We did see a lot of short sales that we considered those, we saw foreclosure that we considered, and we saw a lot of people lose a lot of property. Some of the stuff I'm going to talk about tonight is still from that Great Recession that we had, that we're coming out of, and we're seeing some changes. So by doing your reappraisal every four years, it gives you as a board the opportunity to manage your values better. You can wait, and I'll go through the statute and talk about what the statute requires and gives you options, excuse me, options within that statute that you can look at. So, if I can work this, yes. Let's talk about first, you know, what is a reappraisal? This is where the county, the tax office, goes out and looks at all real estate in the community. We examine it, we visit what market value is, and we use different approaches to value. We bring all property values back to what our hope is, is 100% that all properties are selling at 100%. We're reaching that 100% threshold. What we see in between that time is that some really hot areas in neighborhoods, as they sell very quickly, the sales accelerate there, and their burden to tax is less than other neighborhoods, and there's an inequity. Now, again, keep in mind, as I asked you guys to look and set the reappraisal, you're doing it for all taxing districts within the county, and for six municipalities that tax, all of the fire districts that tax, and our school districts, city schools. You as a county... You as a county board, though, are required to manage the property values in the community, not any of them in municipalities or fire districts or the school district. Fairness and equity is one of the things I think is probably the most important. In it, it brings uniformity. That's the key thing when I talk about this second book, is being uniform across where all citizens are paying the fair share. Some aren't because the property or the markets are hot or selling for higher prices, they're paying lower taxes. And I can show you the calculations of this, and I'll give you some examples as I get into this a little bit. The thing I want to talk to you about on mass appraisal is, our approach to assessing properties is a little different from if you hire an appraiser to come to your home. That appraiser is going to look at your, he's going to spend about, for a residential property, anywhere from 10 to 15 hours, he's going to come to your home, he's going to take some photos, he's going to walk around, and you're going to tell him a lot of things about the property, he or she, and then they're going to compare it to other sales, hopefully within your neighborhood or that community, and they're going to look at probably a sale outside your community to show stability. What the county does is a little bit different. We look at three types of approaches. We look at the market approach, and that's what houses are selling for. We look at those within the last year, like from January 16 through December, is our key time to look at sales if we're going to value property at its market value of January 1st, 17. The other thing we're going to look at is the cost of construction for properties. There are homes being built, and we can look at that construction, and we can look at land prices. And then the last one we look at for industrial and commercial properties is an income approach. When we take our county, we divide it into roughly 2,600 neighborhoods, and we take sales, I'm going to pull one out as a hypothetical, you've got a community, a neighborhood that's got 100 properties in it. 10 of those properties sell within the last year at a pretty close square foot price or a pretty close market price. We can use those 10 sales to tell what the appraisal should be for all 100 properties, and we do a mass appraisal. We apply that to all 100 properties versus coming to your property individually and looking at it. Now hopefully, what we've done over the last four to eight years is, we have been to every home, and we've looked at the home to see how many bedrooms and baths, what the graded condition of it is, what the style of the home is, and we've kept that information in our database. And we have that on our website that people can look at and help us, you know, if we don't have it right. And we do get a few emails if we have a photo that's not correct, or information that they've added to the property that they call us and share the assessments with us. It's important to note that we value land and improvement separately. And we put those values together, and we mail that out as your new assessed value. Two different things we look at. When you look at the land, you have to take into things like zoning, floodways, access, utilities, access to main roads, location, location, location for people look at when they buy homes and build homes. Improvements, there's a lot of different types of improvements that are built on properties that we look at each and every one. Some have multiple pieces like a detached garage in a home. Some of them have other types of structures like barns, sheds, that we look at. We value those independently and the land independently put together. Now, the one key thing, and this is what Mr. Rice mentioned a little bit, and it's important to note, there's no two properties that change at the same time. The last thing in the world to tax we look at is a percent change. We don't even consider percent change. We look at the property itself, the information we've gathered about the property, and what the market is having around that property to value. Yes, when we use a mass appraisal approach, we apply certain techniques to properties in a mass approach, but we do that in a way that you can't say, if my home went up 10%, the guy beside me should have gone up 10%. It may not. Person beside me may have certain features about his house that make the percent change greater or less. So please note, when people say, you know, that their property went up a certain percent, that is not happening across the county, and it's not happening in any one neighborhood. We, and we spend a lot of time with citizens to sit down and look, when we do appraisals, and say, there's not a percent change, and here's why, and we look at all the ones that they want to reference for that. So let's look at what the law says about reappraisals, how they're conducted. Probably what's been in the law the longest is it's Octini, every eight years. Counties are required to do assessments, and this has been since the 70s, every eight years. The second thing that's new, and it's about five years old, the legislators put in there about five years back, is properties that have populations or communities that have population greater than 75%, sometimes grow quicker or change quicker than some of the smaller counties. The Department of Revenue is charged with monitoring those communities, those counties, by something called a sales assessment ratio, and it's a calculation. And if the calculation goes below 85%, this is assessment to market, or greater than, than 115%, meaning properties are over assessed, counties are required to change. And they, by law, can give counties that direction. Our county has fallen below the 85%. I talked to the Department of Revenue a month ago. I was a little nervous about some of the sales that I saw that they were gathering the data on for the second half of our year, because we have some very hot areas in our community. Our sales assessment ratio came in at 84.55%. If we do nothing, we will get a letter from the Department of Revenue directing us to do a reappraisal. The sales ratio, just to give you an example, so you can kind of see, begin to understand as we go through, I'm going to use a hypothetical, is if you have a property assessed at $80,000 and the market value is sales for $100,000, when you divide 80 by 100, you come up with 80%. And it's like this, it would be 80% to assessment is what that property would be. If you had the reverse of that, that you had the property that was assessed at 100%, but it sold on the market at 80, and you divide that, then you're going to come up that it's over assessed at 125%. This happens all throughout our county, and we try to manage by looking at every community and monitoring those for me to make a decision to come before you. The last part of that statute is optional advancement. This is the part of the statute that you as a governing body have used seven times to do our last reappraisals. And to me, I think they've been very successful. All of them have been every four years except for one, when the economy turned down. And as the economy picked up, we came in and asked to do the reappraisal. In 2013, I want to note, when we did the reappraisal from our 2006 values, Buncombe County lost $1 billion in value. We'll show you that. We didn't grow in value, we lost value. So did a lot of the townships and the fire departments around here. All of them have to readjust their rates to come up with the revenues that they need to provide to services. County manager and those townships go through that and come up with what those rates need to be to their governing bodies to set that for their revenues. The next thing I want to talk about is, why change today? These are the items that are probably most important to me that I want to share with you that I see happening. The local real estate values are changing. I see some very hot areas that are growing. I don't want to pick on any, but I'm just going to name off a few. Some of you live in these areas and you know your communities much better than I do. You probably know when houses sell, you see them in the paper, and sometimes you see them on websites, too. But Monford is very hot, West Asheville, Kennelworth are about doubled from our assessments. Beaver Lake, Kimberly, and several in the South Asheville area are declining with excess rates over our assessment. Something that we've noted also, and this is from our last where the economy turned down, is, is a reintroduced neighborhood. We saw where some neighborhoods just kind of stopped. It may not have gotten the roads in them, it may have gotten some infrastructure, but for financial reasons or reasons around the economy, they stopped. Sales stopped in those areas, some before the roads were even put in. Our office went back and worked with developers and looked at the ways that we could help them save those properties by putting acreage values on versus lot values. But what we see now getting reintroduced to us is some of those developments. And where we have assessed them in 2013 at one value, the markets are completely changing to something different. And there's quite a number of those that are taking place, and that I think you need to consider. Another thing that all of us see is new apartments and hotels. Every time you see one of those, note that we're valuing it at the 2013 value. I'm not hitting value that they're building those things for. We are much less on those. And we still have, you can read in the paper, a lot of them in the Hawker coming through. So the longer we delay on that, the less value we get to taxes people at, or at least fairly, is what I'm stressing. Established neighborhoods, these are like some of the ones I just mentioned, like Monford. People are doing remodels to their homes, or adding new kitchens, new baths, a lot of new features to them. Our office is not allowed, Mr. Rice mentioned this, that we can just come in and re-assess your property. Now, I have to have reason to come back. If you add an addition to your home, I have a reason to come back and pick up that addition. If you remodeled your home and you add life to it, say, a new kitchen and bath, and you add another 15 years of life to that, I can only get that in the next reappraisal. I cannot get that at day one. Now, if you do some extensive remodeling to add certain things to it, know that we'll be there, and we see the permits on those. Well, what we do in our system is, we go in and flag those properties that we've got a permit, they've done this type of work. So when we do do the reappraisal, then we pick up those new additions and the new value and the new life that they've added to those homes. That's how we pick up those kind of changes. The most important thing that I want to sum up this slide with is fairness and equity. When I see these neighborhoods that are selling, in some cases where the sales ratio is at 50%, those people's tax burden is much less than somebody that's in another neighborhood that's much slower in growth, that might be at 80, 85, or 90%. There is an inequity of what they're paying in taxes. All right, so this slide here, I want to talk about what would the timeframe look like if you choose to do it tonight? Our office is going to, well, we'll get you to approve the resolution tonight, and then our office will work on the Schedule of Values. Schedule of Values is the document that we will use to assess values until you tell us to reappraise again. Anything being built will be valued by the schedule. It should have all the types of improvements that go on properties. We'll talk about farmland, agriculture, we'll talk about commercial, industrial properties. It gives photos and descriptions of everything that we try to value. There's a couple of new things we're looking at, putting in the schedule this time that's happening in our community. We will bring that back to you somewhere as we gather this information and put this document together. We'll bring that book back in August. There will be a public hearing of that, and then there's a period of 30 days that citizens can come in our office and review it and challenge if they think parts are not right, or bring it forward, and we'll address those issues if we do believe it not to be wrong. That's a pretty big step in the reappraisal. Notices, we'll finish up, and we will mail the notices in January of 2017. We normally get our listing sheets out, second part of January, we send the notices out. We do work our commercial properties a little earlier. We begin meeting with those folks, sitting down, going over them, a little more complicated, gathering data for those. But we'll get all values out the first part of January of 17. Citizens have a right to appeal those values. Believe me, we advertise every way possible for citizens to know how to appeal. We make it where they go online and do it electronically. We have where they can call into our office and do it. They can come and visit us at our office and we'll sit down with them, or we can do it by phone. We've got a lot of ways to do it. We try to spend as much time with the citizen as they need to go through and look at the things in their neighborhood, or how we've come up with their values, they can see that we're being fair with them in the end. If not, there's an appeal process that we go through with them that might get to the Board of Equalization Review. By mid-April, the Board of Equalization Review comes to session, and they convene at that time, the timely appeals have ended, and the board will hear all of those appeals that come forward. You cannot appeal after mid-April. The board sets that as the official date. As you get through March, April, May, and June, county manager and other city managers and fire departments, we've worked in on their budgets, they'll be looking at the values, looking at their expenditures, and coming back to you of what they believe a rate is, or what those services they want you to offer as a board. This is where you will set a rate by sometime before the end of June. And then we will take that information with the new assessments, and we will mail those tax bills out to citizens at that time with the new values. I know I've covered a lot of stuff, and I hope you have some questions. I'll be glad to answer those. My request to you, based on my experience and knowledge of tax, is, there is inequity, and I am asking you only to look at the values and allow me to be fair with citizens by doing the reappraisal to bring all property values up to market, which is 100%.
Question? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any questions? Here's Roberts.
So, just kind of looking at that last slide about the timing and whatnots. So, I mean, this really is a process, right? It's, I mean, this takes some time. So, if you were just going to, because let's, you know, let's be clear that I think most people that are listening to this right now are going to, when, if, you know, if, if there's a change in my taxes, when will I get that notice? And so right now, that wouldn't happen until January because of all the stats that to do this thorough, fair, deliberate process, they won't get those notices, they won't have to pay until January of 2018, right? The notices go out in August, and then the bills will be due over January 18. Is that right?
Yes, we are correct.
So that's basically two, two years from now is when the adjustments will be felt, you know, one way or the other for, for citizens. But it takes this much time to orderly do it in a way that is, that the citizens get to, you know, have feedback and process. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, because that's one of the things I hope people will be willing to.
Yes, correct. It's something, yes, this is something that we do in-house, and we have people in those communities that go out and work those. It does take time. There is where we can use computer systems for that to make it more efficient, but we do have to analyze the data of sales or cost or income to come up with these final assessments.
So the tax rate will be set in January, June 2017, so you and I definitely won't be here. That'll be a work for somebody else to do. But again, that's, that's a big, that'll be, you know, the biggest decision of all. The data will come forward, and then that will be the determinant. That is not going to happen this year. We're just starting the clock on the process. So, and if I understood correctly, it will be prudent and kind of professional for us to do this tonight, because otherwise, we're just, we know that the letter's coming, and then we'll just have to be back here to deal with it when the letter comes. And so I feel like to be a good, you know, partner with the state, you know, respect the process, it seems like the, you know, prudent thing to forward today. So I appreciate the presentation, and I'm supportive of going forward.
I've got a couple of questions, and let me preface this by saying that I've had conversations with Mr. Roberts, who does a great job and very professional in his staff and what he does, so I don't want you to misinterpret my questions. One is, when you, when you come up with the sales assessment, do you have any idea of approximately how many, how many properties you would, is it 80,000 properties, is it 10,000 properties, is it 50% of the county properties, 85% of the county properties, you know, when you, when you come up with that assessment? So that's my first question.
Yeah, sales, in the next, from January through the end of the year, we're seeing roughly five, six thousand deeds coming through, registered deeds of sales. You will look at residential properties, that is the best determinant for that, is the market approach to look at neighborhoods. You can use cost of how construction is, especially when you have your developments going up, or like homes, and you can use cost. You have to be cautious in how you apply it to established homes. And then the income approach is the other one we use, and we, and then we use all three on some of those properties. But to answer yours, pretty much all residential that we're going to do, and I'm estimating that to be around 70,000 probably residential that we're going to apply that to. But you've...
So I'm trying to understand the sales, the sales assessment. So that's based on just the sales that occur?
Oh, you're talking about when I did the calculation.
Yeah, when you come, with 84.55%. How does that relate to the entire?
Gotcha.
How? How does that relate to the entire population, the number of homes? You know, what, how big a sampling is that?
Got you.
Does it come up with that number?
I see what you're saying. I think the Department of Revenue uses somewhere about 3,500 in a year of, of sales. They send us a list from a deep book saying, I want you to go from this number to this number, and track sales and turn them into us. We qualify those sales, meaning if it wasn't a qualified sale, we have a right to pull it out. But qualified sales, they have, they're entitled to review those. So, I'm going to say somewhere around 3,000 is what they're looking at. And they do it quarterly, is how they get that sampling. They send it each quarter to our county and all counties, and then we report that information back.
Okay, thank you. The second thing was, if that would have come back at 86%, would we be having this conversation?
I would be here, yes. Now, the Department of Revenue's numbers are one thing. I'd go further in detail of looking at these neighborhoods. What they do is they do random samples, and theirs, I look more in depth of the entire database and look at these neighborhoods to see where some of them are greatly out. So, I look at more properties than that. Not just all sales, because I can see them over from 2000, or January of '13 forward, but I look at all of those to try to make determinations on these neighborhoods and commercial properties. Great question. I see what you're saying.
So, back in 2006 or '07, when the property, when, when the properties were going down here, did we get to where we met that 115 threshold? Because it seems like the properties went down that 20% at least.
Yeah, we had neighborhoods that were close to it. When we look at all of the sales that were being looked at that time, no, we were actually still around the mid-'90s at that time. But there was inequity among all, when you look at all of the 2,600 neighborhoods, there's a great amount of inequity. But there was some that were greatly overvalued. Getting one that comes to the top of my mind is the settings in Black Mountain, all of this. Those homes, those, those properties up there were selling around 300,000. When they first went on the market, they were selling for around 70 to 65,000 a lot, is how much we had looked at. But when you combine, and we measure all of that, no, it was not overassessed, although there was neighborhoods that were greatly assessed. The very high level, high-end homes were way overassessed at that time.
What did, I'm thinking 2013, when I did my chart, the ones that really took the hit and took away from the tax base was Billmore Forest. Other areas went up from 7% to 14% when, when the tax increase was basically put in, into place, they sent the tax increase. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if we do this, if we can help the people. We've got to figure out how to help the people in, in the taxes, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not worried about the state as much as I am the people of this county. And the rebound, present time, we went eight years before, and that's what we supposedly can do. And I appreciate everything the county did, but we just don't know how things be set here. It's like Polly saying her and David won't be here during the next deal for evaluation. And hopefully, some of us are, but we don't know how it's going to be. Got to look at that area too, in my, my personal opinion.
And please know, you know, I know that when I tell you about the state, or the Department of Revenue, and it's a job that's required of them. They have to take the measurements of what's given to them. They tried to use a fair process over the last year of coming up with properties. I look at a lot of things. I talk to a lot of people. Max Weiss goes, oh, I haven't called him recently. We've had a lot of in-depth conversations where he strongly shares his views, and I believe him. He sees him on the front line, and shares them with me. So, I talk to a lot of real estate agents and people, and they, they're seeing the market change. And I, I think the thing that I'm stressing with you is just trying to be equity, you know, where all citizens are at least a value, there's equity. And how do you set a rate, and what revenue you derive out of that? I, as assessor, can't determine that. That's you as a governing body. Mine's just to say, be fair to citizens and the value that you place upon their properties. Allow them the right to appeal it and show the information that they may have that I might not have. And I've been into homes that have water problems, damage to it, or blood damage, that I didn't know until I went into the home and looked at it. But by them coming forward and talking about it, we're fair, and that's what we want to be, is fair with citizens, assess them fairly, and if you set the rate, makes collections, I hate to say this, makes it easy for me, when people pay their taxes. I get a lot of phone calls when it's not.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking of where I've been, the four years I've been here, and, you know, looking at the people that are having a very hard time paying their property taxes in Duncan County at the present time. That's just, I have to look at that. That's, I think that's part of my job, is to try to look out for the people of the county. And indeed, your job is to do exactly what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that, and everything that your people do. But it's our job, I'm just, you know, I know that if the value of the property goes up, which it's going to, and, but I do know that there's an option that we don't have to change the value of the property, and it's on our side, that's not on your side. I understand that. If that happens, then there's more revenue, a lot more revenue will be coming into the county. And that's, that's honestly the way that, you know, Jared said something earlier, and I've been thinking that for a long time. It's just we, we have to find some relief somewhere. We want to help everybody, but we've got, we've got to help the people that's helping the people sometimes, and that, in my eyes, that's, that's the way I look at these issues. I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I look at.
Well, Gary, is it fair to say there are two parts to it? You're saying that the state government gives us a range, and we fall below that range by their figures, not our figures, right?
Yes.
And so, we will be dealing with them one way or the other. As far as whether people's taxes go up or down, even if we do this, the tax rate that we set, that this, not me and Holly, but Commissioner Jones, but the next board will set, will actually make that decision, the property values are just one factor of the equation. They may go up a lot, and if we set, if this board chooses to set taxes lower, or the same, it could be, well, the same would be more if the property values go up. It could be a lower rate, which has happened. I know when I got on the board, the tax rate was what, 70?
73 cents.
73 cents when I started here. It's nothing that I did, or nothing that any of the commissioners did. The property values went up, and we reduced the rate to what it is now. So, you know, we still have a, this is being fair, because someone that, a hotel is paying for what, the land right now, right? New hotels, they're paying for the land alone.
And they definitely paid for the land and some of the building, not quite the whole market on it, but...
So, we've got some folks that are really getting off pretty easy, and some folks, as Commissioner Frye said, are really struggling. There'll be, there'll be winners and losers, but the ultimate decision whether the tax goes up or down will be with the commission vote in the summer of 2017 about what the rate would be. Is that right?
You're correct. Our job tonight is to look at the values and try to be equitable to all citizens on values. All governing bodies between the fire and cities and the county here have to come back and set a rate that generates the revenue, and that, you're right. As a board, you've got to ask, do you want more revenue, or do you want what you had before, you know, the reappraisal?
Which is really a different discussion. You're just saying we want to be fair, so that part of the puzzle of the equation is, it's going to be what the fair market is, whatever that might be when you do it. And then we're going to set the right best plan.
And if I could say one thing, one of the things the statute requires me to do is to tell you what is a revenue-neutral tax rate. So, if the base goes up, I have to tell you what tax rate would generate that same amount of property tax. Unfortunately, the value went, the value of the entire base went down during our last revaluation, so the rate went up. But that's the first of my history here, the rate usually goes down. But I do have to give you that rate I'm required by law.
And there have been controversies about what that means, but the General Assembly has given us a specific definition of it. You will follow North Carolina law and give that to the board members that are sitting here at the time.
They've given us a formula, and we have to follow it.
And Mr. Chair, can I say one other thing? There are programs that the state has to help citizens that have a difficult time paying tax. Our office, I'm very pleased to say, we have an extremely high collection rate. Last year, we were at 99.72. We look for citizens that are having difficult times and get them help. I was telling Mr. Frye, we've got probably a little over 2,500 seniors that pay monthly to our office in a way to have enough money to pay their taxes in full by breaking it down in payments. Where we manage that, we don't have to do it, but we kind of have like mini escrow accounts. Sometimes they can only pay $50 maybe the next month, or summer months when they're working more, they pay $100. But we work out a lot of situations to help our seniors, disabled, and citizens that need that. That's one of the ways through working in tax, and we've got our collection rates up, is to try to address those. And it's not uncommon for us to stumble on somebody that's in a bankruptcy, going through a divorce. But we look at ways, how can we help them through this, and at the same time, not take their property or displace them? But to work through it to get the revenue that the county needs and other municipalities, and help them get back on their feet. We try that extremely hard.
And I guess there are two parts this board will have to stay in. The actual budget, that's, that's the third part. The first part is what the property value is. The second part is what the rate is going to be, which is a later decision. Then the third part, of course, is what the overall budget to make the county run. So, really, we have two parts to it that we won't decide tonight. The only thing we're deciding tonight, if we decide to do this, is whether to go forward to give him the opportunity to set the mechanisms in place that will take about a year.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I would just like to say that I appreciate your presentation, and I certainly am all for reappraisals especially, or when property values go up. But unfortunately, I think we're in a unique position, and I'm seeing writing on the wall, so I'm, I'm concerned about this, and I actually cannot support this at this time.
Any other questions?
I have one. When will we get the letter from the Department of Revenue? Summertime?
I imagine it is the summer, probably late June, July. My expectation...
This is the week, so we just close out.
Can't hear you.
I apologize. Sorry. So, if we don't do our job tonight, then we wait for the letter, and then we have the same conversation again after we get the letter? Is that the idea? And then, then the whole process is just, we have to do, do it faster to...
When the Department of Revenue sends the letter, they will direct us the date to have new values assessed. It won't be the decision at that point. They will give us, based on the general statute that I showed you, that we will have to have the values completed by that date.
Okay, so, so that's, could be better for us, could be worse for us?
Yeah, I've not received...
But this way, this way, we kind of can plan our work and, and schedule, kind of have an orderly process that, if, anyway, is what you're, which, what's being presented.
I think what I'm saying is by allowing you guys as a board to do that, you get to manage your future values. You won't wait, there'll still be some inequity until we get the direction of the date to do it, but I would always encourage you, if you have the right to set that, excuse me, to take that opportunity. Or, unless it's somebody telling you when to do it.
And I think when they tell you it has to be done within the year, that, that date will, will say.
Yes.
Somehow within, and they are very specific about the date, but you do not have more than 12 months to finish it.
Yeah, and I want to encourage, I think they'll, the date is within two to three years of that, so it could be either 18 or 19. And I'll, I'll be honest, I haven't received a letter, but I'm thinking it might be as much as three years. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Did I understand that this could stretch out to 18 or 19?
It could, yes.
Why don't we pull that statute and send it to you all?
Yes. Well, I'll make a comment, and I'll be able to make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution advancing the scheduled octennial reappraisal. And to me, it's just, as Gary articulated, to me, it's just, the question is, do we want to have accurate information that the property taxes are based on or inaccurate information? We've heard, we've heard of clear evidence that the cost of the changing property values in the community currently, on, on average across the county, the, the values are about 15% off. So, do we, are we comfortable having the inaccurate information to base the property taxes on the taxpayers of Duncan County on? Or do we want to have accurate information? I mean, to me, it's just really that simple. So, I think we should have accurate information going ahead, even though it sounds like the neighborhood I live in is probably going to get hit, probably going to be a loser as a result of this, because it sounds like property values there have gone up more than other areas. So, you know, some, some values are going to go up, and some values are going to go down, and it's always, it always stings a little bit if you live in one of the neighborhoods where they've gone up. But it's fair. If the property values in my neighborhood have risen more than the county as a whole, then, then I and my neighbors should pay our fair share. So, I think it's just important that we have accurate information. What, in future years, the county, what tax rate the county decides to set to determine how much revenue to bring in is a totally separate question. But having accurate information is important, and for that reason, I'm in favor of moving the process forward.
All right, there's been a motion by the vice chair. Is there a second?
Well, I kind of want to second it, but here's my situation. So, I'm not seconding anything quite yet. I'm wondering if, because this is clearly a very important decision, that we continue it till the first meeting in April, and we have, when we have a full board to go forward with it. I'm concerned that if we, that, I, I'm worried that if we don't take charge of our own future, it'll be problematic, so that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. How, how does a continuation work?
So, rule number eight, it just says to postpone a motion to a certain time or date, like you just suggested. It doesn't have anything else afterwards, so I assume it's just a majority vote. Or whoever made the motion can withdraw the motion, and it can be placed on the agenda for, you know, for the next meeting that we're going to have.
So, if it, if it doesn't, if the motion doesn't pass, it can be reintroduced to another meeting?
No. If the, if the motion to postpone does not pass, then whoever made the motion would be able to withdraw the motion, and it could be placed on the agenda for the next board commissioner's meeting. Understand?
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I'm thinking that we would...
It's a fair point. I mean, if this, if this isn't going to pass, I'm going to withdraw the motion so that we can pass it in a full mood.
And I, and I would not be here until 22nd, so I would, I think it would probably forward to next be the first meeting in April.
April 5.
So, I would move that we continue this agenda item till April 5.
With all due respect, we all knew that this was on the agenda, and I believe that the majority also knew that Commissioner Fosse would not be here.
No, ma'am, I did not. I did not know until I walked in the door, so...
That didn't name anyone specifically.
I'm just clarifying for the record.
It was mentioned in our last meeting that we would probably not have a full board, and so, I think we knew ahead of time that we wouldn't all be in attendance.
Any other comments? We've got a motion to continue, you withdraw your motion, is that right? Vice chairs, we're drawing motion. Mr. Jones has made a motion to continue this matter until the April 5, 2000 meeting.
meeting. Yes, sir, Mr. George?
Yes, if, if Commissioner Newman withdraws the motion, I think that the other motion will be, if, if there's nothing to postpone.
Oh.
Is there any?
Yes, sir. Okay. Is there any other discussion on the resolution advancing the octennial reappraisal schedule?
I have another question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can this be done, the, the calculation of the percentage?
I mean, if... Yes, you, you have the right as a board to have us to do rate assessments every year, if that's what you'd like. And we'd have to get a schedule ready. We have to do a lot of work to do that, but you have the right to do that. Or you should sooner or two years. I'm just processing the fairness that, you know, the law might be, so thank you. You, you would have to approve it as a board, though, in order for me to do it, anyway. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the new business item resolution advancing the octennial reappraisal schedule? There had been a motion, it's been withdrawn. We've been advised by our county attorney that unless there is any other action, we will, it will not be heard tonight.
And then, Pat, can you, Mr. George, can you explain if it's not heard, if there's no vote, and it's not heard tonight, what, what would happen next with this?
Well, yes, if it appears on a subsequent agenda, it's just like it appeared there for the first time. So, you know, whoever places it on the agenda, whether it's the county manager or three of the commissioners, it will appear on another subsequent agenda, and that will be passable by a majority vote.
And if there's a vote and it does not pass, when can it come back up?
Yes, sir. in any subsequent meeting. So if it's been, I guess, that would answer your question, or is that, is that not answering?
It does, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm going to make a motion to...
Can I just add to one more thing?
What?
That, that if there has been a motion to prevent reconsideration of the motion, then you cannot renew it. So, for example, if, if you wanted to make a motion at the time it comes up on the subsequent agenda, if it's defeated on that agenda, then you can make a motion to prevent reconsideration. If it passes, then you can't, you can't bring it up again for, I think it's like a hundred days or something.
Well, on that note, I will make a motion to move the agenda, to vote on the agenda item as is presented. Do I have a second? I think we should take a vote. I made a motion to vote.
A motion to, in favor or against the resolution?
Well, if you...
You have to have one way or another. You can say one vote.
As is presented on the agenda, so...
Your motion is to approve it in favor.
Well, either one. Let's say I'll make a mo, a motion to approve this in favor as, as the way it's presented.
And I'm inclined to be in favor of this motion, but I do believe that it would, it's, it's clearly important, and a full board is, is necessary, so I'll, I'll...
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to take, okay, procedurally, that vote, that, can I, is that a motion to postpone? Does that have precedent over the motion on the floor?
Well, Commissioner Newman withdrew his motion.
So we're even?
So nothing was...
Nothing, all right.
Commissioner DeBrul then made a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
That would be now appropriate for a second.
Okay, is there a second to her motion to approve? And I will make the motion to approve the motion, to second the motion to approve the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Second. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so the motion we have before us is a, is a motion to approve the resolution that was advanced by Mr. Roberts. There's been a motion by Commissioner DeBrul, a second by the chairman. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
I would just say that I think that approving this is a prudent thing for the citizens of Buncombe County, particularly the, the citizens that live in neighborhoods that are not benefiting from the, the wealthy insert of hotels and whatnot. I think the folks on the, on the lower end of the spectrum are going to benefit more in terms of balancing the scales. I mean, we, we've learned tonight that some of the folks that we're welcoming into our community, which is great, are paying, are maybe not paying the full, their furl ride. So I think that this is a good motion to approve in, in order to try to help balance that, balance the tab a little bit, and I hope, I hope that happens. I'll also say that I really have always respected the staff's very deliberate thinking steps in all this, and how you've, you've presented it well tonight as usual, and I really value your, yours of expertise in that, and don't want to override that. And I also just want to make very clear to the citizens that this has nothing to do with tax rates. This is not about taxation. If they think it's about taxation, that's not right, and that would be misleading. So this is, this is about valuation, and I, I will be voting in favor of this motion.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Commissioner?
I understand, but if you look at the areas that was talking about, because West Asheville is one of them, it has grown, and so happens, there is property over there in West Yanom. That the, if the tax rate goes up, you know, we keep talking about affordable housing, no matter whatever we do. Affordable housing has something that's kind of going away, and it's, West Asheville is an area that is really, really getting hammered in this new, and, you know, for that, you know, a house of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars in seventy-eight, now they've got it basically two hundred thousand dollars. It was built in nineteen thirty, so. The seventy-three cent rate they was talking about, it was real cheap back then, but now it's traded where it's at, it's between the city and the county alone, the property tax on this nineteen thirty property is twenty-one hundred dollars. And as you notice, that's, there's prior equity and a whole lot of things, and it's harder to make, it's hard to go downstairs and listen to people that do affordable housing, and say, we're not going to go out and build it, and then we have to go up on people that can't afford it. So it's, it's nothing to do with the tax department. You're doing your job, and you're doing a great job. And I appreciate everything that's happening in the tax department. But as far as I'm concerned, it's just, there's just, it's just not right. And what, the tax rate, I agree, is nothing right now. Somewhere in, in our budgets, we have to figure out how to make things work until you can get the things to, in your eyes, that, that work right too, Gary. And I do appreciate everything that you do. I'm not against anybody or anything that they do. But I still have to look out for the people, as long as I said, it is up here, so thank you.
And comments?
You know, I mean, you know, I don't disagree with what Commissioner Frye just said. You know, again, some of the neighborhoods that are likely going to go up, you know, Monford, Kennelworth, West Asheville, these are all places that, you know, are great neighborhoods. But it seems pretty clear from the, you know, high-level information that people who are property owners and homeowners in the rural areas and the small towns in Buncombe County are paying more than their fair share based on the changes in property values countywide. So if we do not get this updated information, the property owners in the rural and the small towns in Buncombe County are going to be paying more than they should based on the valuation of their property unless we get this updated information, so.
Yep, that's what that means.
Any other discussion?
There's been a lot of talk about, you know, taxes and, and whether they're going up or down. My conversation's not about that. My conversation is, is, you know, the comfortability with me on the timing of this has nothing to do with you, the confidence of staff, just excellent. I'm not comfortable with the, with the timing I would like. You know, it seems to me if we're having this conversation, that there will be more, we're going to have more people from the public, and there will be more input, you know, which I would value, you know, very much. And, you know, because of that, I'm, I'm not comfortable at this time. And I don't have a problem if the state sends us something and says, hey, you got to do X, Y, or Z. And if they do, then we'll do X, Y, or Z. But this evening, I'm not comfortable with it, so thank you.
All right. Any other questions, any other comments or questions? Gary, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the resolution advancing the octennial reappraisal schedule, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The motion is three to three, which I believe is a denial motion. So this, this will not pass tonight, and we will on our next matter of business. The next matter of business we have are board appointments. We have three boards that we will be appointing tonight. The first will be the Tourism Development Authority. We have one vacancy, and I asked the firm to call the commission. Three candidates, we've interviewed all of them, all of them are excellent. Ashburn.
Ashburn.
Leah Ashburn is appointed to that board. Next, we have the Historical Resources Commission. We have one vacancy, two candidates.
Kermit Sprinkles.
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 Final appointment will be the County Board of Adjustment. We have two vacancies and two candidates.
I'll recommend Wilson and Lichen.
Okay. Are there any other candidates? All those in favor of Wilson and Lichen say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. They are appointed by six to zero vote. Next, we'll have announcements. Our early voting begins on March the third. On March fifteenth, we have primary election day. There will be no commissioner meeting that day. On March twenty-two, we will hold a budget workshop beginning at three o'clock in the First Floor Conference Room in two hundred College Street. And on April fifth, we'll have our next regular meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners beginning at four thirty at two hundred College Street, room three twenty-six. The county manager has asked that he continue this meeting to, eh, March twenty-two at, I guess, two forty-five, right before, or is this going to do three? Okay, right before our budget workshop. There is a matter of business that has some timeliness that is not right for today's meeting. Is there a motion to continue this meeting to March twenty-two at three o'clock?
Make motion.
And a motion by Commissioner Belcher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frye, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to continue this meeting to March twenty-two, two thousand sixteen to three o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is granted, and we are adjourned. Thank you for being here.